I'd like to welcome everybody to our September 12th regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We've got some good folks here tonight, so let's call right to order at 6:30. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on August 22nd and the special meeting held on August 28th.
And make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, August 22nd, and the special meeting, August 28th.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Audience of citizens, any business to come before the board? Big crowd tonight. Kathryn?
Hi, Sergeant. Thank you. I'm speaking in my capacity as a member of the Library Board, and I'm sure we have Linda Hall, our Chairwoman of the Board, have a letter from her. She couldn't make it tonight. It says, "Dear Selectmen, I'm writing on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees. At our meeting last evening, the Board discussed several facility issues that we addressed and are working to resolve. Refurbishing windows in our historic structure has been our primary focus. Grants have been submitted to complete the restoration, but we are now facing some roadblocks in the grant process. The estimated cost of the project is $54,000. The town's capital funding of $20,000 for window replacement leaves us $34,000 short of achieving our goal. The Library Board of Trustees is respectfully requesting that the Board of Selectmen consider using a portion of leftover ARPO funds, non-committed ARPO funds, to be applied for the completion of the window restoration project. And also, the Board would appreciate some direction on planning for roof replacement that is anticipated in the next 10 years. Thank you for your consideration. Linda Hall, Chair." Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Well, yes, we'll certainly put this in with the ARPO request. The library certainly warrants that. As far as the $54,000 goes, a year and a half ago, I think, was when that was first brought to us. And we were told at the time that the only windows that really needed immediate repair were the ones downstairs. And how much was that going to be? About 10. So that's why we put $10,000 in. To my knowledge, nothing's been done. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then we put another 10 in this year to try to supplement that and keep that project going. Are you now, is the library now only going to wait until they have all of the money? Or are we going to use some of that money now to fix the windows that need to be fixed?
We'd like to do it all at once if possible. We had two groups come in and look at it and do some estimate. The second was 54.4, and the second one was 56. And I went on the tour with them when they did that, and we were advised that it would cost less overall if you did it all at once because of the process for taking the model to...
Of course.
Not being a mechanical person, but that was it. That would be ideal. Could they fix just a couple? That's a possibility.
Well, the idea was, a year and a half ago, that's why we put these pieces in, is to get that done. It's what we did at the Deep River Library for 10 years until we finally got a grant to finish, or not to be correct, elementary school, until we were able to finish it. Because, yes, it's more efficient to do it all at once, but if we've got pieces that need to be done, and now it's a year and a half later, I think we ought to use the money we have now and do it, and continue to go for grants. There's plenty of grants out there, like the roof. My advice on that is to wait until it's near its 30-year lifespan, and then apply for one of the Urban Act grants that we used for the Deep River Library, or STEEP grants.
You know, I kind of dug in. You guys appointed me to the Board and I took on grants, and Joyce tells me to put in the Neighborhood Assistance Grant, and then did five months of work with the State Historic Office of Preservation. And ultimately, we got eight or 10 things completed. You can't apply for anything unless you are either a historic building or in an area of interest. So we got a little block there, and they're discussing truly pursuing it. Consider, we probably need a new board with the new elections and everything that's coming on, so new energy to focus on it. What happened with that is, one of the things you needed was to have a plan of preservation. And so, we had some help from the town, but they came over and looked at the roof and had someone else look at it. We don't need the whole roof till later because it's got a good lifespan, but there's about $20,000 estimated repair. Do they need it this minute? No. But so, there are a lot of things that are just creeping up behind us.
I just spoke with the roofer who looked at it, and he indicated that there's no repair that's necessary now. We need to wash the moss off of it, and then we've got to take some look at the beautiful copper beech and get some of those branches out from on top of the building. So we're going to get it harvested up there. Gosh, I hope that tree survives the beach blade.
No, beach blade is not good.
So I could do with your...
But yes, there are things, the roof is a big deal. That's a big roof, and it's going to take a lot of money, and that's something that when it comes time, my advice is to go for, do it all at once with a good grant from the state. STEEP is back, and that's a very valuable tool, and that's a good one. The Urban Act one is even better, and that's what we've used, you know, over the last two years. We've gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars from those two grants, and those will be perfect for that.
Do we have a resource here? I think I heard one of the meetings we put in $35,000 for grant writers. Is there anyone the Library Board can tap to help them?
We have funds for a grant writer, $5,000. We have not, we have not got anyone on call. We do most of our grants, the fire department's doing their grants right now, and we've been doing our grants. Joyce has been terrific in making sure that that stuff gets, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, but we're doing that ourselves right now.
So respectfully, we're hearing what you're saying. The request of the Board was to ask, if there is unfunded money, could you please apply?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable question.
We'll put it in for the town.
And I would echo what Amy says, is there's $20,000 to get the project going, and if they need to be replaced, the ones that need to be replaced should be replaced sooner than later. There are economics of scale to a small project, but having the money to do it sooner than later is the question.
Totally understand that. Totally understand, but we are asking to give us the $34,000.
Absolutely.
Yep. Jonathan?
Has it been 15 years since we did that roof, or more?
It's been more. It's been about 20.
Well, I'm getting older. Who would have thought?
Well, it's good that it's being brought up because roofs eventually need to be replaced. This is, in my almost five years, I've never heard any conversation about the roof on the library until just tonight. So it's good to get, well, I know it. It's good to get the ball rolling, get the attention level, get it on the map.
We'll go on the capital improvement plan in a few years so we can just let folks know that it's coming.
Yeah, keep it on the radar.
Anybody else? Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on sale or donation of the recently replaced fire truck. Seems that's a 1983 Pierce something. So we have two offers on the, to buy, to purchase it from collectors. One's for $5,000, I think, and one's for $4,000. I've done some research since our last conversation, and there are three organizations that I've connected with outside of the one that Dave connected with, is sending them through Ukraine. Most old fire trucks, based on my research anyway, are donated internationally to third-world countries. But there's another, there's a group that I reached out to, I haven't heard back from yet, called Brothers Helping Brothers, that we donate the truck to them, and they find, they find another place in the states, in the continental United States, to go for. I, I don't know. I want to, obviously, it has to go to the town, but my feeling is, I would feel better about contributing the truck that's in good shape, other than the fact that it's got an open cab, and it's old, to a town or a community that can use it and will use it, rather than making $5,000 on it. That's my own feeling. It's something that's town property, it should go to the town to...
I would agree with that. I know that we, as the town of Deep River, the fire department have donated trucks to needy communities over the years. I know at one point, there was one of our, more than one of our trucks was donated to a rural community in upper upstate Maine someplace, but they thought that truck that we didn't want anymore was golden there because they needed one really bad. So I would be in favor of donating it someplace. I mean, a $4,000 or $5,000 check to the town isn't going to, isn't going to make a whole lot of difference financially.
If you had five windows at the library.
I know it's not the audience, but I would humbly request that state that five grand to number it.
I think, I think donation is, and whether, and Dave came up with the Ukrainian, and regardless of whether you're for or against the war in Ukraine, it doesn't make any difference in my opinion. They're, they need, they need trucks, and they need ambulances and all that because of the crisis that's going on over there. So, you know, donation of it, I think, would be where I would prefer to go.
Me too. If it's okay with you and you to take another couple of weeks and just get some, get some real information from these guys and see what the story is. And I'll reach out to the, I have both proposals, so that's another, we're strongly considering them both, but...
Rangel's?
Rangel's name.
I don't know who's one of our trucks or we're willing with. I know one of ours came up.
I mean, I understand that the donation would be in my great town project or town service, but the $5,000 should be put somewhere back into the town.
It'll go into the general fund.
No, that would be a good thing, but it would also empty out the bay that the town will have to...
No, absolutely. It's got to go. The bay, the bay, the bay is empty. It's up at the town garage.
And it needs to get out of there.
But the town garage is going to need that bay.
No, we understand all that. I just want to make sure we put in front of the town what we put each of them.
So are you halting that, or are you going to try and bring it to town?
No, we're going to, I don't know, Jim, if you want to bring it to town meeting, without a proposal to bring to the town, it's...
No, I think we should pursue that, that organization that you've got. And if they, if they don't come up with anything, or they aren't interested for whatever reason, then we can go back and look at the sell or donate to another.
Yep. Okay, so we'll table this.
Okay, yeah.
The only other thing I have to announce is Bill Burdick, a former selectman, sent in his resignation as a representative to the Estuary Board. So I certainly are grateful for all of the time that he's served on that because he's done that since he was a selectman. So we're looking for, if anyone knows of anyone or anyone is interested at all in representing the town of Deep River on the Estuary Board, that's the downed old say...
Well, I was just going to say maybe for everybody, what is that position or what?
Yeah, it's a good question. A hundred percent, other than it's just, you know, they have a board of all the towns that they serve.
And the Estuary is for senior, senior services, basically?
Yes, it's a senior, generally speaking. A lot of folks from the community participate, but it's generally for elderly. And they do some service, a lot of, a lot of folks from Deep River go down there, take advantage of some of the things that they do, a lot of great meals, dances and things like that. But they also, you know, we give them money every year.
Yes, we do.
It gives us an eye on what they're spending on. So that's all I have. If you don't have anything, we'll put your motion to adjourn.
I don't have anything on my radar. I make a motion that we adjourn at 6:44.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned. Okay. I'm going to call the Board's Special Selectmen's Meeting to order at 7:02.
We'll call the Deep River Board of Finance meeting to order at 7, hmm, 7:04, according to my...
Well, I would...
It was that long introduction you gave that...
The time's horrible.
We were a little bit slower than that.
The first item on our agenda, and I think on yours too, is to talk about something that we've been talking about for a couple of months. We had an inkling that this was going to happen, but the school just became aware, right at the beginning of the school year, that it is happening. So there is an unanticipated expenditure at the Deep River Elementary School that amounts to $152,000. That has to do with student needs. There's not a whole heck of a lot more we can talk about, about the purpose for this expenditure, but I can explain to you that of that $152,000, we are expected to get back somewhere around...
Right here.
There we go. Thank you. $35,697 will be reimbursed. So the total expenditure is going to be $116,500, but we have to put out all of that $152 first and then get reimbursed from the state. We can talk about a lot of that. The cost that we get back has to do with the cost per pupil and all that kind of thing. It's all, it's just a complicated formula that the state uses. The school right now is holding back on some of their expenditures that they have through the year because they need, they needed to start paying this as the school year started. So we need to try to expedite this so we can get it into the budget and get it into their budget as soon as we can so that they can get back into their regular spending. If you have any questions more specific than that, or anything more for the Board of Education, Miriam graced us with her presence even though she's suffering for us. But any conversation you might have just has to go to town meetings because it's not in the budget, so...
Sounds like it's not discretionary based on student need?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a, it came up after the budget was, you know, after our budget was passed.
And really didn't come to reality until just less than a month ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, because of FERFA and HIPAA, like...
Yeah, no, I understood. I just wanted to know if it was non-discretionary and it wasn't...
No question about it. So if there's questions, ask them. If there's not, we're going to need to move this to the town meeting. And I'd like to schedule it, and that's why we ask, and thank you guys for coming out as for a special meeting, so that we can get this onto the agenda for the next town meeting that we're scheduling regarding the bombing.
Can I ask, what happens if the town votes it down? Do we have to find the funds somewhere else because it's not optional? This is...
Oh, yeah, no, there's no question.
So would the funds come from, we would look at other places to find the funds?
The school would have to find the money in the existing budget.
And it would basically, that's to make the school, like, yeah. Like, and in the end, it could be more costly because we would end up having to, like, not have certain resources. Like, here's just an example, like, we put a building sub into the budget because that's cheaper than having daily subs come in, and then, and we have a sub shortage, so then you can't get them. Now you're using paras to fill...
Which I'm aware of.
Yeah, but, and then, if the paras aren't doing the jobs that they're supposed to be doing, we could end up with lawsuits. So it's, it could end up being way more expensive than this.
I think, I think one of the things too is, with the elementary schools, it's separate, it's different from the region, the seven through 12, in that the seven through 12, they have the ability with, to build a sinking fund that they can use for different things. We don't have that, it's a very tight budget over there.
Like, we could budget for a John Doe, right? And so, we could have a lot, the $150,000 plus dollars for sitting on our budget, but then, like, if there's some other need in the town and we don't need that, then you can't, like, I know you guys are totally aware of how this works.
Yeah, no, we've made those decisions.
Yeah. Arguably, we have a sinking fund with our surplus.
Correct. No, that's exactly right. This is one of the reasons why it's so important for us to have that, sorry, that in existence.
So what process? Would you like us to initiate, to approve it, and then the selectmen can move it? Or do, have the selectmen approved it already?
Well, no, I think we're going to, we're going to recommend to you, that you recommend to us that you put it down there. So if that's, if that's okay, we can make a motion to...
I make a motion that we, the Board of Selectmen, recommend to the Board of Finance the unanticipated expenditure in the amount of $152,000.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Finance?
Have received a recommendation from the selectmen for $152,000 between...
One, oh, sorry.
What he said. Yeah.
You can't find the 97.
Say that again. I guess that is not in the call neither.
No, you're right.
Is that a problem, or can we make that adjustment?
No, we can make that amendment. It's, we can amend that. That's just, just numbers.
You got to compliment somebody. You've certainly studied that case.
Yeah.
Board of Finance?
The right of the, the selectmen have made a recommendation. Does anyone wish to discuss it or proceed?
I would say we proceed. I would make a motion that we recommend that the selectmen put forward the amount of $192,197.95 to town.
$152.
Oh, $1152, sorry.
Very generous job.
Oh, yeah. What did I say? $192? Extra 40 slush funds.
As your board of finance, you're getting very generous.
So I have, first, does anyone wish to offer a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Other than that, let's take a vote. All those in favor, accepting this proposal, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, get it. Good. All right.
Thank you.
We're sending it back to the selectmen so that they can set up a town meeting.
Yep.
Put it on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda. The next item that we need to discuss, and that you need to discuss, has to do with the Urban Act grant that we obtained at the end of last year, or last fall, for playground equipment around town at the elementary school. Well, we went through the resolution to do, to accept that money, but part of that resolution did not include that we need to appropriate $50,000 to accompany that $325,000 grant. So we need to send to the town a request for the $50,000 appropriation from the reserve fund to supplement the $325,000 from the grant. That was part of the grant. It was, it just slipped through the cracks of putting the resolution together. So we need to, similar to the STEEP grant where the town needs to contribute something towards it, so we're going to get $375,000 worth of equipment for $50,000.
This is not a STEEP grant.
This is not a STEEP grant. This was an Urban Act grant.
Which is a state-funded program.
Yeah.
Has the selectmen acted on this as...
No, we're going to, we're going to do the same thing that we just did.
I make a motion to appropriate $50,000 from the reserve fund to supplement the Urban Act grant of $325,000 for playground equipment.
I'll second that. And it is $50,000, so we don't have to worry about that. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Finance, you have just received a recommendation from the selectmen to send to the town, to approve $50,000 out of our surplus to fund the playground equipment and send it to the town. Comments? Anyone have any thoughts? Begin the conversation.
Is this playground equipment open for the whole town, or is it, is it restricted to the school?
No, it's, it's open for everybody. You'll see, all summer long, after school, families are at the elementary school or at the two parks. But I think they're going to want to go to the elementary school more because it's a really heck of a setup.
Board, anyone who wants to start?
I move we approve sending $50,000 to the town from our reserve. From our reserve for the urban, no, let me see, the playground equipment from the Urban Act grant, for the Urban Act grant.
First, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Conversation. Anyone have a question, thoughts, wish to share? All those in favor?
Good ratio.
Aye.
Thank you. Although, well, having a, what do I have, seven-year-old granddaughter, some of the playground equipment in today's world is just, it's like spaceship.
Oh, yeah.
NASA must be involved in this playground. It's not like the little things that I would swing...
I know, the spinners.
The spinners that you get to, it's like truly...
You can't do those anymore.
Exactly.
Okay.
Do you have an item on your agenda for the...
The Board of Selectmen needs to now schedule, discuss and schedule that meeting, but as part of that conversation, I want to let Carmella and Mike and everybody know that we did, in fact, get, what do you call it, the bank, the bank committed to the loan for $500,000 at a 5.75% interest over 15 years.
And we were talking max, what, six or six-five?
Yeah, so it was six when we were talking. So that was, that was great. But we're going to do, what we're going to talk about is scheduling a town meeting as soon as we can to get all of this stuff in front of the town. And that, that includes the $500,000 for the purchase of the sweeper, the wood chipper, and SCBA apparatus, and appropriation of $150,000 from the reserve funds to spend it on additional road paving, and the two things that we just talked about, $152,197.95 for the elementary school and $50,000 for the playground equipment. So unless you have more conversation about that, we can move that right along.
I make a motion to schedule a town meeting as soon as possible to vote on the acquisition of a general obligation note not to exceed $500,000 for the purchase of state sweeper, wood chipper, SCBA apparatus, and issuance cost, and to vote on the appropriation of $150,000 from the reserve funds for road paving, to vote on the unanticipated elementary school expenditure that we discussed earlier, $152,000, $152,197.95, and to vote on the $50,000 appropriation from the reserve fund to supplement the Urban Act grant of $325,000.
I'll second that. And pending any further discussion? No. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Just to bring you up to speed, we have not gotten an idea, a formal surplus yet for the past '22, '23 budget, but just simply, simple, 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 simple math of the revenues that have come in over, that were completely unanticipated. You know, we could talk about the $100,000 in interest that we were able to get, the $100,000 from the building official for permanent, another $100,000 for conveyance taxes when people sell their houses, plus another $200,000 from tax collections, just straight up. And I think there's even more from other tax collections from, so, and then we underspent by about $100,000. So we're looking at $600,000 to $700,000 of surplus, which will add on to our, to our reserve fund, and expense, which really makes it, I, it's exactly what that's for, and it gives us an opportunity to do things like this and not affect anything, and put our surplus back up to the 12 or 13% that we want to be at. So I think that we're in really good shape, and I picture you coming out on a kind of off night to try to get this stuff done. Thanks. Motion to adjourn?
Do they have to do something on this?
Nope.
Okay. Motion to adjourn at 7:18.
Board of Finance, do I have a motion to reserve?
7:18.
So move.
Seconds.
Seconds, okay, at 7:18, thank you.